Thank you, Madam Clerk. That brings us to item 4B on our agenda today, and that is going to be a report and overview of the Upper Magnolia Green East and West Development zoning cases. I believe we're starting out with a brief introduction today, and then we'll go straight into staff. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Donahoe?
The floor is yours, sir.
Good afternoon, Chair Owens, members of the Commission, Director Gillies. Today, we are before you again to discuss the Upper Magnolia Green project. This, of course, is a large rezoning project in excess of 2,400 acres in the Matoxco Magisterial District. This, it's made up of two rezoning cases. It's split by the Powhatan Parkway. We refer to the projects as Upper Magnolia Green West and Upper Magnolia Green East. What we're going to do today is we're going to continue the discussion and review of the proffers. We have revised proffers, as well as a revised conceptual plan, so we're happy to bring that before you and discuss that in detail, and how we've kind of arrived at the elements that are contained within the conceptual plan and the proffers themselves. We have assembled a team today to go through the various sections of the proffers with you. We have, the folks that are part of this team have provided, they've provided a review in the case, as well as drafted proffers and provided comments to the applicant. We have, the applicant in this case is the EDA. We do have the applicant's representative here as well that would be available to answer questions. That's Andy Conlin. He's in the audience. We have, the structure of today's presentation will be to go through the Upper Magnolia West project first. We're going to start off with the transportation portion of the review provided by Brent Epps. Then we're going to have the utility section. That'll be Mike Nannery, followed by environmental engineering, Scott Dunn, and then planning's going to follow up at the end of that to go through the proffers that we have from the planning perspective. Okay, so, before we get into that, though, I just want to recap some of the work that we've done so far. There's been a lot of community outreach, there's been a number of work sessions, as I mentioned. This is the third installment of a Planning Commission work session. We've had five community meetings so far. Four were solely dedicated for the discussion of this case, and there's another meeting planned on March 10th that's going to be hosted by Chair Owens and Commissioner Sloan, so we have that upcoming. This, of course, is a very large project, and naturally, it's garnered a lot of public attention and a lot of feedback. We appreciate folks staying engaged in the project and helping to shape this, the proffers and the conceptual plan that we have before you today. What we heard with all of that, all the public feedback, all the public engagement that we've had, we, especially early on, we created this list of six issues that, or common issues that we have referred to over the past few meetings. Things that we wanted to address in the proffers, and we're going to go through some of these in today's presentation, and what corresponding proffers and design elements we've included in the conceptual plan to respond to these. But, proffers have always been a key discussion point in the case, especially on the west side of the Upper Magnolia West project, especially along the Mosley Road area. Uses in particular, I think very early on, there was perhaps some misunderstanding out there, perhaps maybe some misinformation about what exactly the uses were that we were proposing. The I-2 zoning district does allow for a lot of uses, however, in this particular case, we're being very prescriptive and saying only seven uses now are going to be permitted on the property. So, again, we'll go through all that in detail shortly. The construction of Westerly Parkway, the, actually, the ultimate build-out, whether it's a two or four-lane piece of infrastructure, that was a point of contention that we heard from the public. That'll be addressed in the presentation. Also, the school site, the public use site, we had very early on, we had a high school, middle school, elementary school, as well as a library on a roughly 200-acre piece of property. There's been changes to that, and we're going to update you on that. There's also, you know, associated with that particular issue is traffic to that site and the construction of the surrounding infrastructure, the North-South Road in particular, the timing thereof, that's also something we heard, and we're going to be touching on that because things have changed in the proposal. And then lastly, there was a desire from, that was expressed by particularly the Westerly and Summerly communities for continued involvement in the development of the project. Next, what I want to review with you is this slide. This has been shared with the board, actually, and what this is, is representative of the issues that were raised at the previous two Planning Commission work sessions and the follow-up discussions that I've had with each one of you. And so, we put that on this list here, and we're going to be addressing each one of these in this presentation. And so, looking forward to that, to getting into the detail of that very soon. But, wanted to show everybody, before we get started, this is the revised conceptual plan that we have for the entirety of the project. This is, this includes both the east and the west side of the project, as you can see. If you remember the original plan, this is definitely an improvement. We have identified areas of development, we've better delineated the RPA and environmental areas on the site, improved buffers as well. We've included the trail network, which we did have before, but I think it's a better-developed trail network this time around. And so, we've heard what the concerns were with the Planning Commission, as well as the community, and we've addressed those and features in the conceptual plan, and we'll go into this in more detail. But, first up, we have Brent from Transportation, and so I'll get out of the way and let him address some of the transportation issues with the project.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. I will start off by saying I have several maps included throughout the presentation. I have hard copies here, if anyone would like them, because some of them can be a little difficult to read. Okay. So it's, they get three each, so top three, they're all different?
Okay.
Okay, so, as those are being distributed for your reference, just wanted to start with a little bit of background on where we are with the traffic impact analysis. We discussed this in some detail the last time we met, but I did want to update you that both of the TIA's, one for the east and one for the west case, were submitted to VDOT for their review on January the 14th. Subsequent to the submission to VDOT, we also posted it to the project page, and we received comments back from VDOT on February the 2nd. We had a meeting with VDOT subsequent to receiving their comments on February the 8th, and we are diligently working to address those comments and to submit a revised TIA to VDOT for their approval, and we anticipate that going back to them by the end of the month. Again, the TIA addresses existing conditions. It grows that future, based on the existing conditions, it also grows future traffic, both with and without the development. And then we add on to that future traffic growth, the projected development, the traffic from the, from the development. Based on that traffic impact, we recommend mitigation measures, and those are both based on operational analyses and safety. This is the first map that you have on the, the first of the three that you have. It gives you an idea of the area that the traffic analysis studies. We looked at 14 intersections as a part of the east case, 20 as a part of the west case. Those are all numbered, and then within the TIA, we developed specific improvements for roadway segments based on traffic volumes, as well as intersection improvements based on levels of service. To give you an idea about the project, traffic projections, we include, for the middle school only, we did a specific study year for 2024. That allows us to require specific improvements with the middle school when it comes online, and then also allows for additional improvements in the future at 2041, which is the design year that we are currently working towards. The west case, we, everything that you see will be based on 2041, which is a corresponding design year for the west case as well. So we've updated the future traffic conditions with the development based on, as Mr. Donahoe mentioned, the, the original proposal included three schools as a part of the east case, a middle school, elementary school, as well as a high school. You'll notice on this updated chart that we have removed the high school from the eastern case and moved it to the west case. Just to give you, again, another idea and a feel for how much traffic is being generated by each case. In 2041, the total daily trips resulting from the east case is 13,092 vehicles per day, and the west case, 49,194 vehicles per day. One more item I wanted to point out on this slide, we've broken out each of the uses on the eastern case, as well as on the western case, and you see you have a good feel for the size of the schools on the eastern case, the total number of single-family units in the eastern case. On the western case, the, the total square footage that we're projecting for the industrial is approximately 13.2 million square feet. That is based on an assumption that 8,000 square feet of industrial will be developed per acre. And, again, the high school has been moved to the western case, so you see the number of students there. So getting into the proffer conditions for the west case, generally speaking, the transportation proffers for the west case are broken down into four areas. We have right-of-way dedication, an access condition, road improvements, and a phasing condition. Here is the chart that outlines the right-of-way dedications for the roadways that we're anticipating improvements along. The access condition is a condition in which the applicant will submit an access plan for the roadways to be dedicated to the county, and that access plan will be approved by us. The access plan that they'll provide will correspond to each road referenced in the plan, and in such a time that the access is proposed to or from the property to that roadway. So we will know exactly where each access point will be to and from the property. And one other item that, that we've added to this condition most recently, in response to some community input, we have included in the proffer that there'll be no direct access to and from the property to Mosley Road. So, access, direct access into and from the site will not be allowed to Mosley Road. Getting into the road improvements portion of the proffer, one thing we want to note is that, in conjunction with initial development and each additional phase of development, the owner will submit for approval by us a traffic impact analysis, otherwise known as a traffic study, and a plan for the overall development of the property showing road improvements necessitated by the uses and the density. Again, that traffic study would be provided upon initial development and then any subsequent phases of development. So we've got a rather lengthy list of improvements associated with the west case. This is the second map in your packet. It's a little, it's a little easier to understand the level of the improvements when looking at a map as compared to just a list of improvements, but I'll go through briefly what the, what the improvements are, and if you have any questions, you know, please don't hesitate to ask. So the number, the first improvement that we have listed is the construction of Powhatan Parkway from Hall Street to its current terminus, and that is highlighted in purple on the map. We have improvements at corresponding intersections along the roadway improvements, so you'll see green circles on the map in front of you. Starting in the lower left, we have Route 360 and Skin Quarter. The proposed improvements at that intersection, the traffic analysis that we've done would require a green T signal and some additional turn lanes. But, again, all these would be confirmed in accordance with the traffic analysis that the developer would do. Also, improvements to Route 360 from Beaver Bridge Road to Cosby Road. So that's a six-lane divided improvement, and that's shown there in the dark brown on the, on the bottom of the map. Westerly Parkway from the North-South Collector to the westernmost property line. So that would be construction of that piece of Westerly Parkway, as well as construction of the North-South Collector from Westerly Parkway to Duval. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Improvements, Magnolia Green Parkway from Woolridge Road to Westerly Parkway. So that would be from, no, that would be intersection 17 to the north. Yep, the yellow line from 17 to the north, all the way to the northern property line. Duval Road from Otterdale Road to the southernmost property line. And as well as Duval Road, as currently existing, from the southernmost property line to Skin Quarter Road, improved as a two-lane, that would be the blue to the left there, Steve. Yep, exactly. Skin Quarter Road from Duval up down to Route 360, so that's from 13 to 1. Yes, sir. Mount Herman Road from Westerly Parkway to Genito Road. Yes, sir. Genito from Mount Herman to Otterdale, improving that as a two-lane. Otterdale Road from Duval to Woolridge Road. Yes, sir. And so, all of those roadway segment improvements would also have their corresponding intersections improved as well. So we don't have specific intersection improvements for, you know, intersection 7. We have, we have an idea about what would go there, but those are not listed specifically in the proffers because they would be included as part of the roadway improvements for that area. Is that clear? And then, as a part of the roadway improvements proffer, the applicant has included a phasing plan will be provided prior to any site plan approval for the improvements. So along with the traffic study, and then prior to any subsequent site plan approval, they would have a phasing plan approved for the improvements that would be required for that phase of their development. Any questions there? I'm going to hop to more details on the phasing plan.
I have one question. I was contacted by the homeowner that road improvement number 19 is coming out, and it appears that road may be taken part of their property that gets dangerously close to their home. I believe on some original plans of the thoroughfare plan, that road was more north. Is there any reason why we moved that road further south to make it closer to residents?
You're referencing intersection number 19?
Intersection 19.
Yes, sir, Mr. Owens. We, we don't have any right-of-way in that area at this point. At this point, that section of the thoroughfare plan are lines on a map, and they can shift one way or the other as we, you know, need to in order to accommodate those improvements. So, so while we have them shown on a map, we haven't located them from an engineering standpoint at this point, so they're still available to be shifted as necessary.
And can we go back a couple of slides where you did the nut traffic numbers?
Yes, sir.
I have a question about that slide in general.
This one?
Yeah. So that total together is around 61,000 trips, correct?
The, the two cases together?
Two cases together.
Yes, sir.
So if the Powhatan part is not done all the way through to get to the other existing Powhatan, will all of that 61,000 end up on Hall Street as its major exit area to get in and out of that development? Just out of curiosity.
So if I'm understanding the question correctly, you're in, the question is related to the access to and from the site should the Powhatan Parkway not be constructed?
Not be constructed all the way through. If the Powhatan is constructed just from Hall Street into the industrial development, would all that 61,000 pretty much be coming back down the Hall Street to get exit out of that?
It would be distribute, we would have to look at the distribution without the Powhatan. All of it certainly would, would not unless that was the only access provided to the site. And without having a proposed access plan and one developed, I really can't say where that, where that traffic would go, other than to say it would be dispersed to the existing network.
Okay. Thank you. And then the other question I had is, when we looked at these numbers originally in the newest map we just got showing the high school in the top left now at Mount Herman, does that change, moving it from basically one side of the Powhatan to the other side, significantly change the number of cars that'll be on Westerly Parkway for that school?
Yes, sir. So we're, we're currently looking at, at that distribution. We do expect there to be fewer vehicles using Westerly Parkway between Otterdale Road and the North-South Collector as it pertains to the high school. So, as the high school would have access to Mount Herman, access to, you know, Westerly Parkway west of the Powhatan, and having the North-South Collector constructed between Westerly and Duval, we do expect that to relieve some traffic from Westerly between Otterdale and the North-South Collector.
And then, the last question I have, and it's just, I'm making sure I understand this, one of the things you all said was there would be no access to the site from Mosley Road. And that, that small road on the northwest corner that goes to Mosley Road from the site, I'm trying to understand how that road is there when you're saying there's going to be no access to Mosley. I'm just, it's confusing.
So, that's a good question. Yes, sir. So, so the proffer as written is there'll be no direct access to the site to Mosley. We, in transportation, do expect in the future there'll be a connection from Westerly Parkway over to Mosley Road, but that would not have direct access into the site.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Do any other commissioners have any questions?
So, just want to know what, what the conversation's been like with the school board and schools, and how their impact will affect traffic, I guess, coming in and out of, I know we're splitting the cases up, but how that shift will impact traffic in terms of those schools?
Yes, sir. So, I'll jump to the, to the trip generation table again for you. The high school per day is anticipated to generate approximately 4,600 daily trips. So, we, we have a good idea for the number of trips that are generated per school, and then the location of the school determines how those trips get distributed to the network. In the previous proposal, with all three schools being on the same site, we knew all three schools were going to be accessed in the same way from the network. What we've done, what the proposal is, has done now is it's taken the high school, removed it from that original school campus, and relocated it to another area, which provides different points of access and opportunities for the network to absorb those trips in a different way. So overall, it's a benefit to the east case because it's reduced the number of trips. In the west case, it's increased the number of trips, but we've also provided additional points of access to the high school to account for those.
Okay. And then, I guess that's, that's kind of been the conversation between the county and, I say the county, but planning and school administration, that's kind of been internally the conversation of you, and the reason why it's been kind of moved is to allow better traffic flow, essentially.
Yes, sir. I think the concern that we heard from the, from the citizenry was generally having all the schools in one place created a significant traffic burden on one part of, of the county. So, just relocating the high school helps to distribute that, that traffic a little better.
And my question is not so much to stump you or anything, it's just really to bring light to, some things have been moved around, some conversations have been had, and we realized that originally, some things might not have been positioned where they need to be positioned on the track of, of land, and now we've, we've had those conversations, gone back and done some study, and we really understand where they need to go now based on those conversations. Is that what you're saying?
What I can say from a transportation standpoint is, we, we are reacting to the proposal
Okay.
and doing the study based on that proposal, and then providing recommendations for improvements to the network to accommodate that proposal.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sloan? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Brent, I've got kind of a laundry list, but I can wait for you to get through
Okay.
the rest of your stuff, but one thing that keeps coming up is, is a phasing plan.
Yes, sir.
That will trigger more studies and whatever. What are the metrics of the phasing plan? Is it a certain number of trips per day?
Yeah. Let me, let me run through, let me run through what we currently have in the proffers, and then we can have some more discussion.
I mean, beyond, I mean, what I, what I read is, there's a phase, there's one phase. There's phase one, and then, I don't see anything in writing that speaks about any additional phasing, and what triggers additional phasing, and what requires additional traffic studies to be done, which, which kind of requires us to address transportation at a future point in time.
So let me, before I go into the details of what's in the proffer, I'll, I'll state in general terms, the difficulty with putting together a phasing plan for, I mean, it's the, it's the Powhatan that we're talking about. So, the difficulty with saying, before you have X number of square feet of industrial developed on the, on the site, you will build a portion of the Powhatan from A to B, and then another percentage from B to C. The difficulty with that is, I can, I can put in a condition that says, you will construct no more than 5 million square feet of industrial before you have to construct the Powhatan from 360 to Genito Road, and I'm just picking termini out of the air. If we get, let's say, the, the site develops with 2 million square foot users, so you've got 2 million square feet out there, and you've got nothing for the Powhatan built, and then you get another user that's 2 million square feet, so you've got 4 million square feet, you still have nothing built. It'll be a race to 4.9 million square feet, and everything will stop if you, if you don't get a user large enough and important enough to the county get a user large enough and important enough to the county to come to us with a plan to construct it. It's simply a matter of a race to whatever that first phase is, and then it stops.
But Brett, what happens if it builds out like Meadowville? Where it's not a big, I mean, unless we're going to proffer a big single user, or two big single users, which causes the skies to part and the state to show up with a billion dollars, what happens if, over a period of 20 years, we get a half a million square feet, a million square feet, million and a half square feet at a time? What, what, where does something in there trigger that we've got to do something to address it? I mean, in the 91 case, in the 91 case, the traffic analysis basically said 65,900 average daily trips. And staff said no to the case because the applicant wouldn't proffer at least two lanes and address the issues on the thoroughfare plan. Okay? Now, if you, and, and that was the whole of Magnolia Green, the whole thing. And if you go back to the original schematics, Area A under the 89 case, which is the existing Magnolia Green neighborhood, that accounts for about 22,000 trips in the original traffic impact analysis. So if we take 45,000 proposed on the west, on the west side, now 15,000 on the east side that we're looking at, and 22 that now exist, where in 1991, staff had a problem with 65,900 trips, we're closer to 84,000 now. How do we get the road built?
Yeah, but also, don't forget the way that the county got this land is the current developer got to the point where the switch would flip, or he would have to start building the pow height, and decided he wanted to either increase more houses or sell the land.
Well, I, I'm-
Yeah.
And I agree with that, thank you, Mr. Chair, but there's nothing anywhere.
And, and, and I agree with you, Mr. Sloan. Short of, short of putting in a condition requiring the construction of the pow height upon initial development of the west case, I don't think there's any guarantee for anything. And even if you do that, it may not be a guarantee.
So there's no metric we can use, trips per day, or, you know, a proactive measure that says for every-
We, let me be clear. We can put in whatever the commission would like to see in the case. I can proffer it to the EDA. The, the EDA can choose to include it or not include it, but it would be a guess on my part based on however many square feet we want to include, or however many trips per day we want to include, as to what user it is and where it would be located on the site. And at the end of the day, I still think it would be a race to that minimum number of trips before you hit that trigger to build the pow height, and then development would stop. I mean, I, just to be completely clear, that, that is, that is our position.
So by putting a condition in, it would require development to stop?
No. That it would likely stop because it would be a race to that minimum.
I think what he's saying is nobody wants to be the one that flips the switch and has to flip the bill. That's what it comes down to. Is that what my interpretation is, just to ba, basically, on a basic level? No one wants to be the one that flips the switch?
Yes, sir. And, and so the reason that we've written the phasing plan the way we've written it is, is such that prior to any plan approval for the property, a plan for the pow height parkway extension to include a timeline and a financing plan will be submitted to and approved by the Board of Supervisors. That's with initial development prior to any plans being approved. That would, that plan for the pow height parkway extension, including a timeline and a financing plan, would have to be submitted to and approved by the board.
Mr. Chairman.
And then prior to any, prior to the issuance of any CO for any development on the property, they have to construct two lanes of pow height from 360 to the Magnolia Green Parkway interchange. Now, there was some language in the submitted proffers that, that talked about a phase one, but in my subsequent conversations with the EDA, they have removed that language and are agreeing to what we're proposing here in the phasing plan.
Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Epps, just to help me understand, and I'm trying to follow the thinking of Commissioner Sloan about the experience we've had, the county had with Meadowville developing in smaller increments-
Yes, ma'am.
And that, there's no guarantee that that might not happen here. So the way this is written, I would understand it to say that regardless of the amount of square footage or the size of any plan, whoever that first developer is of any size would have to have a plan and a timeline and the financing for how the pow height would get done.
That is correct. So should the board choose at that time to limit the number of square feet of industrial or require it upon, depending on the size of that first development piece, that would be determined at that point.
So the Board of Supervisors would be in a position of rejecting any development that couldn't meet this, this, this requirement?
The, the way the phasing plan condition is written is that prior to any plan approval, meaning no developer could get a plan approved until they had a plan for a timeline and financing plan for construction of the pow height parkway extension from 360 to its current terminus.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Mr. Sloan?
I gotta ask.
Yes, sir.
When will we get the financing for the Willis Road interchange? It's dependent upon the state, right?
It's, it's dependent upon several factors.
I'm sorry, that wasn't, I-
Certainly, no, I understand, I understand the point of the question. It's, it's a large project. It's dependent upon how much right-of-way we need to buy, because at that particular location, for that particular project, the right-of-way acquisition is more expensive than the construction, just by the nature of where it is and what's adjacent to the interchange. So different sort of topic in conversation, but it's dependent upon a number of factors. But yes, partially the state, partially our, our regional funding authority, partially dependent on where it falls in the priority list.
So is that-
I mean, I will say, as a broader conver-
Is that a realistic proffer then to put in front of the Board of, Board of Supervisors when all five of us up here know that it's contingent upon the state to show up with a bunch of money? I mean, I guess I'm just, I'm just trying to wrestle, how would the board, how, and I don't want to, I'm getting outside my swim lane, and I shouldn't do this, but how can we put a reasonable proffer or recommend a, accept a reasonable proffer from the applicant that includes a component called financing when that's not something that's necessarily within the Board of Supervisor's control?
Mr. Chairman, and just to, to understand that, wouldn't, because at that point in time, when a plan is being presented, a developer's going to be known. And at that point, the board would have the facts to base a decision on, to, to know if a financing plan was going to be viable or not, depending on who that user is.
Yes, ma'am. And, and the count, and to Mr. Sloan's point, the, the county would have to be at the table, the state would have to be at the table, there would, there would need to be a number of, of key stakeholders and, and players at the table to develop that, that timeline and financing plan. That will not be created in a vacuum. So I did just want to touch on the, the school site. In conjunction with the school site and the construction of any school facility on the site, construction of two lanes of Mount Herman and/or Westerly Parkway to include the intersection improvements and pedestrian accommodations will be completed, to be determined by us again. That's just in reaction to, to the new location that the school site has been proposed at. So I think that's my last slide. Again, I'm happy to answer questions. On to utilities, then?
Actually, I had a couple of questions.
Oh, yes, sir.
Yeah, so there was a letter that VDOT sent on February 2nd, and a couple of the issues that are in this letter, are you familiar with the letter?
The comment letter?
Yeah, the comment letter. Under item number 17, it looks like even with the pow height parkway as part of this, there's several intersections that are going to still remain Level of Service E and F.
Yes, sir.
They're asking for more mitigation than what we've already defined that we're going to do in order to improve those intersections. Is that correct in my understanding?
So what they, in our conversations with VDOT, they are working to understand the mitigating improvement, the improvements that we're making to mitigate the development do not address all of the issues that we're having on the intersections within the study area. So what we're trying to do is parse out the impacts based on the development versus some issues that already exist along the corridor and in specific intersections. So yes, sir, we're having ongoing conversations with VDOT about those locations.
Okay. All right. Do any other commissioners have any questions for Mr. Epps? Mr. Sloan?
So Brett, let me ask you this. So there's, there's two issues that I wrestle with. One is kind of like with pretty much any case that will come to us from a private developer. Mr. Commons represented lots of them over the years. There's the issue of the thoroughfare plan on the site, okay? Then there's a larger issue of the pow height parkway beyond the site as an off-site improvement as it relates to this case. Could, could your department work through, and I'm, I'm going to suggest something that utilizes, I, I have a problem with using, we use square footage for the traffic, the traffic, the traffic impact analysis. But I think we, we kind of live in a day and a time where we can have an awfully big footprint, a Niagara-type facility, where you got a whole lot of square footage under roof, but it doesn't necessarily generate, you know, they don't, it has a relatively small employee base, and it doesn't generate a lot of traffic. I don't think that should be treat, treated the same way as perhaps Amazon. Matter of fact, I think they're two perfect examples. They sit right next to each other. One has significantly more impact, traffic impacts than the other one does. Is, is there, is there something that you could, and I'm not suggesting that you write a proffer, but something that this commission could look at that would, that would give perha, give a, give perhaps a recommendation on, given a certain number of trips per day? So maybe it's something like, for every million square foot that's developed, it triggers a traffic impact analysis, and, you know, we look at number of trips generated. That could come up with a, a modeling exercise for the phasing for both the thoroughfare plan, and then maybe one for the extension to go from the northern, northern boundary up to, I think it's what, Coalfield? Is that where the terminus is now, Coalfield?
Charter Colony.
Charter Colony, my apologies. Something like that.
We can certainly look at something like that. I think, so number one, just, just to be crystal, all of the improvements to the, to the network external of the site are, are a result of the analysis that we've, that we've already done. What, what we're requiring of the developer is that, again, just as you mentioned, regardless of how many or the size of each phase of development, we're, we're going to require that study be done. So I think the first part of your question, we've captured. The second part, related to the number of trips generated based on those, those phases or, or plans for development, to model impacts to the thoroughfare plan, again, I think we've got a pretty good idea of what that is, but certainly the subsequent traffic studies that will be done as a part of the proffer conditions will speak to that, you know, more, more specifically. I think where we're really at is trying to, to look at a, at a, at a model that would somehow provide a tipping point, if you will, of when the existing network begins to break down, and what the improvements would look like to the existing network, such that you can't improve your way out of not building the pow height parkway. So for example, again, I'm just pulling numbers out of, out of the air. If you looked at a modeling exercise that said, when you get to 25% or X number of trips, you would need to, for example, widen Genitoe Road to six lanes. I don't think anyone has an appetite, I certainly don't have an appetite, to build six lanes and cross the reservoir multiple times. That could potentially be a trigger to say the existing network is at a point where you can no longer improve your way out of not building the pow height extension. Does that make sense and address kind of what I think you're asking for?
Up to the point, though, you know, ultimately, we're in the position of making either a recommendation of approval or denial to the board. I, I don't think it's unreasonable in that recommendation, in the staff report, for the board to have a good understanding of, you know, what are the, what are, what are the metrics that, that they're going to need to look at and consider when it comes to, does that road get built through a public-private partnership? Does it get built with stunt funding from the state? If it, you know, all of those what-if scenarios, but I think it's a reasonable expectation that, that there's a, a knowledge of, you know, based on a certain metric. You know, you know, in theory, you know, 10 years from now, there could be some latest and greatest, very highly automated facility that really doesn't create a lot of traffic impacts that could fill up most of the site.
And, and that speaks to why we've written the proffers the way we've, we've proposed them.
The only thing that I probably need additional help with, and I'll let you go.
Okay.
You know, when I look at, when I look at the road improvements under proffer 10, I, I see language that says, as part of plan review for phase one, owner-developers shall submit to Transportation Department Traffic Impact Analysis such improvements. And then it says, at each phase of development, what, what does, what is, from your standpoint as the Director of Transportation, what does "at each phase of development" mean?
At any point with which a developer would be coming in to seek plan approval for a project.
For any additional parcel.
Yes. For, for any, for any additional phase of a development, either with, within its existing parcel, or within a new parcel within the area bounded by the case.
All right. So help me out. What does that, what triggers that? Site plan review?
Yeah. Excuse me. Yes, it would be, as the request for a site plan would be submitted, we would have- Yes, it would be, as the request for a site plan would be submitted, we would have the information with that submittal to get, start to establish what level of a TIA would be necessary for them to put together for that project, be it a 10-acre site or 200-acre site. They would be putting together the appropriate TIA based on what they're proposing at that location. So it could be a larger, full-blown, global type of present, uh, TIA, or it could be a much smaller kind of project depending on the, the size and scale of the, of the proposal that's being made. But for every site plan that would be coming into within Upper Magnolia West, they would be having to meet that criteria.
Okay.
That's the way, the way I'm reading it.
Yes, sir.
And again, this is, this is just me, I don't want to speak for any of the other commissioners up here, but if, Andy, if maybe your team could work with Brett to just make it just a little, a little clearer to those of us that don't spend our lives on planning all the time and understanding the nuances of, of what exactly trick, what are the specific events that will trigger? Yeah, that will, that will.
We could say within, with, with each site plan submittal, a, however we have it worded there would be required. So I think we could, we could work on language for that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? And we'll move on to utilities.
If I, just, you know, I, I know this is hard and it's a lot to digest for you guys. As much as you can provide us in input regarding transportation aspects to the west side, if there's any other thoughts you're having such as what Mr. Sloan's been, you know, explaining and trying to get across, any of the other thoughts you guys had as to how we might be able to approach this? It is a very unusual and complicated process, uh, project. And we're, we're, we are struggling trying to figure out a good way to tie in certain triggers or methods for making sure that we get the roads right-sized as things move forward. And so any comments you guys have are, are welcome and will maybe trigger something in our heads from a staff standpoint that might be useful as we work with EDA and, and try to come up with a refined set of, of proffer. So anything goes, just kind of give us ideas as you have them and we'll try to work with those as much as we can and, and.
I guess I'll be the elephant in the room and just say what I think some of the other commissioners are thinking.
Okay.
This proffer leaves it pretty open-ended that if this goes forward and the board votes on it, they can put together this phasing plan and if the tides change and a new board gets in, they can change this phasing plan without having to come back through zoning and public hearings. And that's a concern of mine. I, I think that's probably what we're getting at, more or less. Am I wrong in that? Oh, you weren't thinking that? Oh, okay. Well, I'm thinking that. I'm worried about that. I'm worried about it changing because nothing in there says it has to come back through planning again and, and go through public hearings and people hear what the plan is. It just says the board's going to make a plan and it leaves it open-ended for the board to come through and make that plan and make changes to it how they see fit in the future without any kind of.
Phasing plan.
Yeah, the phasing plan without anybody really having to do it publicly. That's what one of my concerns is, so.
Okay.
Maybe I'm wrong for speaking for others, but I feel that that just leaves it open-ended and it doesn't force them to come back through planning should they have, have a phasing plan and then change it and then change it and then change it, so.
And I guess the benefit, if we somehow inserted it into the actual zoning case, is that it would require more public involvement.
Yes.
Hearing before the planning commission, so that's, that's your reasoning for trying to see that phasing plan more detailed out and insert it into the actual.
Or at least make it so it has to come back in front of the public when they do those phasing changes to make changes to it after it's published? Mr. Petrowski?
Would it still go through a public process at the board level and just not the planning commission level, or would it not have a public process, period?
I think it would be at the discretion of the board if they wanted to have it public or just to, it's something they could do. I don't, I don't think that's been spelled out yet.
Sure, then I do share Mr. concerns if there's going to be no public input on the process at that point. I think that's a fair concern.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Sloan? Sorry, Mr. Nannery.
And I'll just have one other. I think there, there are lots of times where during changing, different changing economic conditions, where when global economies start to slow and budgets start to get tighter between federal and state agencies, during those same time periods, we see lots of industry come up with more automation and, and more cost-efficient ways to deliver services. So I really, I, I really do have a fundamental concern that we could see a project like this from an economic development standpoint be successful, be very successful. Maybe not one great big user, maybe not two great big users, but over a period of time have successfully created, you know, a, a successful employment center in an environment where the state and the federal government says, we, we don't have an extra billion dollars laying around. We, we gave all that money out in 2021, 2022, right? We, we gave the however many trillions out for federal transportation dollars and, you know, that's covering us for the next 15 years or something like that. So I, I worry about going back to what the chair said originally. I find it unacceptable that we could ever be in a place where, if not all, a significant portion of 60-some thousand trips goes down to 360. I understand some will take Woolridge, some will take whatever, but, but even if it's half that, 30,000 trips, something like that, to me, there has to be some sort of metrics to ensure either, either you're going to pull back on a liver, you know, there's going to be something that says we're going to pull back on, you know, we're going to pull back on, you know, developing out the western side, or we're going to figure out another way to pay for the road. And I, I'm not, it's, it is absolutely not within, I believe, my swim lane to tell anybody how to pay for it.
Right.
That's neither here nor there. But by the same token, I, I can't think of too many cases, large cases, and again, I think of cases like Roseland and Brainer Station where, you know, thoroughfare plans in detail were approved, phasing and, I mean, Brainer Station, I mean, how much more meticulous could it be, right? X number of houses triggers this, X number of units triggers that, whole nine yards. Nowhere in there was there, was there, was there a, and I think they were building a, you know, they're building the east-west freeway, you know, big expensive roads, but nowhere in that case did it say contingent upon H.H. Hunt's ability to get financing. One, not wrong, they had to build it one way or the other. So I, you know, that's, I, I, I worry about a huge amount of traffic ending up on 360 simply because this thing evolves in a way that maybe we just haven't anticipated how it could. And I don't, and I don't have a solution. I don't, I don't have the, the wording to, to come up with it, but that is a huge concern of mine.
It's going to take a partnership of state and federal and county to, and the developer to make that road connection, so figuring out how to do that is tough. What, the idea and as everyone, as you've been talking about, you know, kind of, and, the point that Mr. Epps brought up as to, once we get close to that benchmark, it would kind of start to slow down development because nobody wanted to cross that hurdle. If there is a way we could create some sort of, you know, incremental pay-in as, depending on, if you're creating X number of trips with it, whatever you were proposing with, with your project, you had to provide, you know, a certain contribution based on those trips. Would that be, I don't know, would that be for a project like this be something that would be a better, more equitable way to get to that?
Could we maybe look at something? Could we maybe look at something like we, we have people proffer so much per house, proffer so much per square foot or something of that nature? I guess the worry is that you say, you say that the development was slowed down when we get to a certain point where one of the triggers are, that's kind of the whole point of the phasing. In order to keep going, you've got to do this part here in order to go to the next phase. And if it slows it down and stops, then that's kind of the point. If they're not doing the rest of it, that needs to stop because we can't keep doing what we've done the whole street and what we've done to some of the other parts of the county. And I'd, I'd not saying people here are responsible for that, that's been years and years and years that some of these roads have gotten to where they're, they're, you know, 70,000 cars a day. We've, we've got to start putting plans in place and, and make them phase in and make them stick to the phases and not give people outs and not change things later. And I think we're doing a good job of that now, but we've got to, we've got to start doing that and sticking to that or else we're going to end up with unpassable roads.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Dr. Hilton?
You know, so I see, I see it kind of both ways, right? Because with the developer, they, they're going to, they have income coming in, they can, they can make that happen more, more so than Chesterford County, because Chesterford County will be in charge of making sure they had enough money in order to make the road improvements. So I guess, and it might be something that economic development might have some ideas on, or some other department agencies might be able to help us with making the, the framework to say, when you get to a certain point, hopefully we'll have the money in place, the revenue in place based on what we, what we expect to get in from income, taxable income. Maybe it's, maybe it's traced to taxes, maybe it's traced to something else for the businesses that will put on those parcels. So I, I don't, I think that a developer has that same kind of issue in a way because they're trying to figure out, how many houses do I have to build in order to make those road improvements? And we're kind of looking at it, how, what do we have to attract, what's a, what's a, maybe it's a tax rate, maybe it's something like that, that we're trying to figure out the trigger for us to do that. So maybe that's a, a conversation we can have offline when we, when we meet individually with the planning team, but I, I see it, I see it, you know, kind of both ways for as soon as a, when, when you have a, a public project like this versus a private project, I think you kind of run into some, some barriers there where you might need to reallocate some funds to another project or something else gets, gets a different priority. So you can't shift that priority as quick, you know, as you would like. So maybe working with economic development, if you, if you, if you all have something you want to, you know, work with us on and talk to us about, you know, maybe we can figure out those triggers from some type of analysis from some other department.
You're, you're saying basically trying to create, do some sort of analysis as projects come forward that would be future, what would be the revenue that, that particular project would generate for the county over a 20-year period of time, whatever? What's, what's that figure? That's what you're?
Right, almost like our, you know, almost kind of like what we do now for our, our road, road projects now, like how, you know, the, the transportation.
Return on investment.
Right. So we know that we can allocate, we need to allocate this amount of money to the road improvement and figure out how we do that in ear market throughout the budgeting cycle to make sure we have enough money at that, at that particular time. I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's the right answer, but it just, we're kind of openly talking about it as our work session, so we're just trying to figure out what, what are the triggers? You know, we want to make sure we have enough money to make that, those road improvements, but we also need to attract the type of business in order to bring us the revenue that we need to have in order to make those road improvements. So it's very fuzzy how we do that.
Okay.
That's just my, my perspective.
Any other comments from any commissioners? All right, Mr. Nannery, water in, water out.
Any questions? Water in, water?
I have one question, it's in 34 parts. I'll start with part 31, so go ahead, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Commission Members, Director Gillies. My name's Mike Nannery, I'm the Assistant Director of Utilities. I have a couple of slides to present on the west this afternoon. From our previous conversations, it was apparent that there were some concern on the industrial discharges that could be produced from this development and any impacts it would have on the public utility system. So we've asked the applicant and they graciously accommodated our request and they proffered here, as you see on your screen, number 12F, talking about wastewater pretreatment. The proffer reads, "Any user discharging non-domestic wastewater to the public wastewater system shall be required to comply with the industrial wastewater discharge permitting requirements of the Utilities Department." So what does our pretreatment program do? What are their objectives and goals? They're here to prevent pollutants from being introduced into the public wastewater system that would interfere with our treatment process at our plants. If that happened, we could have treatment upsets and/or we could have contaminants that would impact our ability to dispose of our bio solids. So that's one of the goals. The next major goal is they're there to prevent the substances from getting into the system to start with. Anything that could pass through the plant that we couldn't adequately treat or completely treat may have an impact on the aquatic systems of where we are discharging and those receiving waters. So a little bit more about pretreatment. Chair Owens asked the last conversation we had about this subject matter, what were some of the things that we regulated? We do metals, we do pH, fats, oils and grease, we commonly call it fog. Those things clog up our system, total suspended solids, biological oxygen demand, and then the old Chesbys stuff, the nitrogen and phosphorus and removal that we do. We have, actually, I said we had a robust pretreatment system. We have seven employees, staff members dedicated to that function to protect our plants, do site inspections and to regulate our industrial dischargers. They range from licensed engineers to water quality compliance specialists. A lot of what we do is codified. Inside of chapter 18 of the county code, Waters and Sewers, we have a complete article, number four, which is dedicated to the industrial waste discharge. If you're, want some nice light reading one evening, pick that up and look at it. You can brush up on your biology and chemistry because there's a lot of that in there. What do these groups do? And the pictures I've, these are actual pictures from our team. They go out and they do wastewater sampling. Two of the pictures show one of our team members installing the sampler in a manhole. It shows the manhole sampler installed, grabbing the samples out of the actual sewer system below grade. And then some of our site inspections, one of those is, the upper left is Sabra and the lower right is at the Defense Supply Center. At the last community meeting, there was some conversation about how will we assure that our wastewater and water system is of quality construction and it won't leak out into the groundwater? So I wanted to spend a little bit of time assuring you that our construction inspectors are on the job, we have seven of them. This is DJ Messer in the upper right-hand corner, he's one of our principal construction inspectors. We have a vigorous inspection program, our system components are pressure-tested, we pressure test to make sure they don't leak substances out or substances leak into them. So water and wastewater are pressure-tested a little bit differently. And then at the end of the construction phase, when everything's covered up, we actually send a closed-circuit TV camera into the sewer systems to look for defects and debris that may have been deposited during construction that we can't see from the surface. Maintenance concerns, I hit on that at the last conversation we had. We periodically go and inspect our systems, principally our smaller diameter wastewater pipes, and we do cleaning of them routinely to prevent blockages. pipes, and we do cleaning of them routinely to prevent blockages. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on the west.
Commissioner Sloan?
Thanks. Mike, actually, I just have one question. So going back to, and I know it's been a long time since the 91 case, but there was a, there was a, there was something I noticed, and it basically said, "A portion of the request site lies within the Applematics River Drainage Basin, and it may not be feasible to serve development in this area with the public system." Do we have parts of either one of these, the east or the west, that because of slope, drainage, gravity...
It's a very good question, Mr. Sloan.
Gravity's going up instead of down, whatever it is?
Yes, sir, we do, indeed. Let me clarify, for the west, there is a small portion that drains towards the Applematics River Basin. In the east, there isn't none. That all drains back towards the Swift Creek Basin. So there's a provision in this case that allows for a public wastewater pump station as a permitted use for a small area to the western part of the west case. And that proffer is in there only if we needed it. So it is a very small portion of that area that could be utilized for something else that doesn't necessarily generate public wastewater. In typical site development, if you have a high area and a low area, and the low area can't be served, well, that's a great place to put your parking or your stormwater basin that doesn't need public sewer.
So for the purpose of the case, it can all be serviced by the public system?
Yes.
With some modifications?
Yes. Some people call our wastewater pump stations lift stations, and this would be a good category for that. We're going to lift it up from that low spot, pump it up to the top of the hill, and then it'll flow gravity to the east to our Proctor's Creek.
Do you have that in Medville, right?
Excuse me, sir?
Do we have one of those pump stations in Medville?
We do have a pump station in Medville, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners, comments? Thank you, Mr. Nannery, for your time.
See you for the east.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Sloan.
I've got another question. So, so again, back in the 89 or 91 case, whichever one we want to refer to it as, it says, "The developers have agreed to fund the purchase and installation of up to two water quality monitoring stations plus one spare station. The stations will be placed on the tributaries which serve the development. The Utilities Department has been charged by the Board of Supervisors with responsibility for monitoring water quality in the Swift Creek Reservoir and its tributaries." And it says, "Utilities Department will accept the responsibility of the monitoring stations." Were those stations ever installed? And is that something that's still under y'all's domain? Or do I get to chat with Mr. Smedley about that later?
Well, I'm happy to speak to the part that I know, and he can fill in the blanks after that. But those stations were indeed installed because our tributaries to the Swift Creek Reservoir meander, the pickup points move. They are not actively being used at this particular point, to the best of my knowledge. And I will defer to EE because they actually own and maintain those versus the Utility Department for any other additional details. There is one that's close to the actual fire station out there, at Mag Green, the Lower Mag Green Fire Station, where the tributary comes through there.
Okay, so, and again, without, without holding you accountable for this, but to your knowledge, they're there, but we maybe aren't using them currently?
They, they are, they are high maintenance, low return on investment that we talked about earlier. And I believe EE does other alternative measures to check for the water quality in those streams and the reservoir. I do know that for, the reservoir is periodically checked. So there's other functions that we are doing to maintain and perform that function.
And from your standpoint, the outcomes are just as good?
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you.
Again, as we go through these, if there are other thoughts you guys have from a utility standpoint that you'd like to see additional proffers considered by the staff, let us know so that we could, you know, work on those and hopefully figure out a way to work those into the case.
Thank you again, Mr. Nannery.
Mr. Chair, members of the commission, I'm Scott Dunn, Assistant Director of Environmental Engineering. EE's proffers for this case really hasn't changed since the last work session when Mr. Smedley went through those. They are still providing the enhanced erosion and sediment control measures to be used during construction to help limit the amount of any sediment that may escape the site, along with minimizing disturbance on any steep slopes out there. Along with that, they are proffering to protect downstream properties for flooding, and that's typically on the 100-year storm. Just wondering if you had any further questions?
Couple of questions. On the BMP ponds that are going to be required for this property, what type of event are those going to be required to handle? How many inches per event?
Well, the standard is that they be sized on the 100-year storm, be able to pass a 100-year storm. But they'll also analyze the 2, 10, and usually the one-year storm to help protect the downstream channels.
Okay. The other question I was asking about some of the residents around here, would there be any measures put in place to keep track of the groundwater for any possible contaminations from the site and have a monitoring plan for that over a period of time to make sure none of the industrial that goes into this site affects the groundwater for the residents and the perimeter of the area?
Yeah, our department really doesn't oversee monitoring of the groundwater. We do have a BMP maintenance responsibility, since these will be in the Upper Swift Creek watershed. The county maintains all BMPs in the Upper Swift Creek.
Mr. Sloan, I see you lit up over there. And your smile, your smile also lights up the room, sir.
Thank you. So Scott, in a site like this, where we take what is, what is currently a heavily forested area, the western side especially is basically, from a layman's standpoint, I'm sure we can find a stream that goes farther, but it's essentially the formation of the two creeks that ultimately feed into the Swift Creek Reservoir. If we were to assume, you know, a successful project where we got lots of buildings, lots of parking lots, roads, all that kind of stuff, we're making a, we're making a lot of impervious surfaces there, creating more runoff. Do we have any kind of indicators? Have we looked into any effects, say, during drought conditions? Could, could that, could that kind of a wholesale redevelopment potentially cause issues with shallow wells in the area? Not from a water quality standpoint, but from a water quantity standpoint?
That's probably always a possibility, but I would think with the buffers being requested as part of the case, the impervious areas with this project would be far enough away not to impact those wells. But I mean, when you add impervious areas, especially on a larger project like this, that's always going to affect probably the groundwater table and the depth. But the stormwater regs technically are supposed to be promoting that your post-developed project is imitating your pre-developed hydrology, so that depending on what type of BMPs they use to help, might be able to help recharge the groundwater.
And do we have any wetlands delineations yet, or any of those, do we have the resource inventory, natural resource inventory?
That was just recently submitted and is currently under review.
Do we have any idea what the timeline on that is to get that back?
Probably, we're looking at three to four weeks.
So another month before we get that back?
Right. It takes a while to look at 2,400 acres.
So we don't, do we know yet where the potential pad sites are, what the potential largest pad site is versus smaller, smaller, more continuous ones are?
Once we have a closer look at the NRI, we'll have a lot better idea of where the larger pad sites can be. Because it's going to affect, you know, the resource protection areas, which will affect the developable area.
Yeah, that'd be very helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Dunn? Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Do you have another question? Just checking, just checking. Just checking, sorry. I think, Mr. Condon, are you coming forward to go through proffers? Is that our next step, Mr. Gillies, or are you going to be going through it, Mr. Donahoe?
I think Mr. Donahoe is going to go through the more planning-related proffers that have come in and are in the pack, and let him go first.
Yes, exactly. So here's this slide again, just to put it up before you, just again, what I'm going to be doing is going through the things that you've already told us that you wanted us to address, either via proffer or changes to the conceptual plan. I'm going to go through one by one, and whatever it is that you would like to discuss, we'd be happy to kind of go into these. And if you have any ideas, as Director Gillies has put out there, if you have any ideas, if you don't think a proffer goes far enough, we're all ears and we'd be open to hear more of what your thoughts are. So again, just to revisit what the Upper Magnolia West Project is, it's a large-scale rezoning. It's 1,728 acres. It's going from R9 and agricultural to I2 for the ultimate development of what we're calling a technology village, consisting of employment-generating uses. Advanced manufacturing is one thing we've called out, you know, that, it's kind of a generic term for some of these manufacturing uses we've identified in the seven uses that we could potentially have on the property. Also allow for some office and commercial uses. We also have public facilities that would be necessary to serve the property if the property is going to develop in accordance with the plan. We have a fire station as well as a school site that would be included into, in the project and included in the proffers, as well as an increase from 150 feet up to 199 feet for a water tower. And those last three things I just mentioned would be requiring a conditional use plan development, and that'll be noted in the staff report, as well as how we advertise the case moving forward. So to get into the issues here, what you see and highlighted, comes off of that slide I just showed you, these again are planning commission issues that were, that came from the previous work sessions and the discussions we've had to date. Collectively, each one of you have discussed with me the need for greater detail in the conceptual plan. So we went to work, and with that being something in mind, we, one of the things we wanted to see was a better road network. So we took a look at including a, what is ultimately determined or became a ring road. And so the significance of this design versus what we had before, what we'd shown you, which was really just a representation of the thoroughfare plan, which unnecessarily parsed this piece of property into smaller developable areas. And that was again, the thoroughfare plan from 1989. Here we are now with this change, which has a ring road concept, which allows for larger contiguous developable areas, but then still gets at the need for transportation or trips dispersion throughout the area. We talked, we talked, actually, another point was access points. The, this mainly came from conversation, I think, from folks in the Mosley Road area. We wanted to, there was concern about having a westward connection to Mosley Road, vehicular connection in particular, didn't want to have that be kind of a back entrance into the park. We understood that made sense. We've included restrictions in the proffers, as well as not showing any type of access. In fact, we have a very wide buffer now on the west side of the property that, so with the proffer and the conceptual plan, we don't intend to have a vehicular access on the west side of the project. We have, there was a point, Commissioner Owens, I believe you mentioned, a need for showing land base and perhaps some variation of uses permitted in those land bases. What we did do in this process, we went through and kind of better delineated the development land base with the RPA shown, so we know where development will likely not occur. And what we do have is a very refined set of uses that can go in these areas, these purple areas. There was a question about whether or not we were treating this project consistently when you compare to a private initiated rezoning case. And I think from the planning perspective, the planning elements of this project, when you look at what we've included in the conceptual plan to date, coupled with the extremely limited set of uses that we have available to develop on this rather large property, when you take into account the buffers that are substantial and exceed county standards by quite a bit, I do think that, I would say that this is a comparable type of proposal that we would entertain from a private developer for a speculative rezoning similar to this. Going into buffers, buffers, what we've done since the last version of the conceptual plan that you saw, we have a, now a 200-foot buffer that's along the western portion of the property. And in a lot of places, as I mentioned, it would even exceed that quite a bit. And so just going into the buffer topic, again, this is one that we've talked about in every one of the community meetings we've had to date. It's obviously a very important thing for folks. We wanted to make sure that people feel comfortable with the protections we've put into this project. When we look at this particular project and what the uses are we're trying to permit on the property, we want to, you know, insulate the site from the surrounding properties as best we could, as best we could. And I do think we've put forward a solid effort in doing this. We have, one of the benefits of this particular property is it's very heavily wooded, so we intend to use the existing forested vegetation to become that buffer area, so that, you know, starting day one of any use commencing on the property, you'll have that buffer in its mature state. That's a positive. We have a 200-foot buffer that's along the Polite Parkway, so that would help with any kind of visual, you know, concern people might have from the Parkway itself. We also have, and this is the one that's been discussed quite a bit, is the perimeter buffer, and that, we've written it in the proffers to be a variable width buffer, but having a minimum of 200 feet. And then the buffer will be provided in accordance with the conceptual plan. And so I want to zoom in, let me show you this real quickly. Included this, this is where we were before. This is the previous conceptual plan, which showed a 100-foot buffer in very little detail interior. And obviously, we've advanced the bill quite a bit. We now have this, this exhibit, I've zoomed in on the portion of the buffer where we have adopted, put forward an idea that's hopefully going to, you know, show that we've put forward an effort to, you know, protect those, the folks that live along the western portion of the property, in particular on Mosley Road. We have, just to explain what we're doing here, I mentioned it's a variable width buffer, but it's a 200-foot minimum. What we've done is we've taken a look at, and we've measured, 750 feet from the nearest residential, existing residential units, and measured inward into the site. And so any portion of that 750-foot distance that falls within the Upper Magnolia West site will become buffer. So what you see here is that striped area in this exhibit, the conceptual plan, where you might have some areas that kind of jut out into the site, and it looks like a pretty wide area. Well, it's because it's going to be a wide buffer in that area, because there are homes that are relatively close to the property line. So wherever there, the idea being, wherever there are homes that are closest to this property line, we wanted to provide additional assurances and protection to those folks that we're going to have a very substantial buffer between their homes and any construction that might occur on the property.
Eve, why don't you, on the, with the pen there, maybe just kind of show them with the crosshatch where some of that is, just so they have an idea?
Okay. So there are some, there are a fair number of homes along Mosley Road in this area here that are actually pretty close to the right-of-way. Excuse me. Yeah, I got it, thanks. But it's not working. So, huh. I'll try a different color. How about blue? No luck. Steve, you want to help me out here? We have, okay, along Mosley Road on the western side here, we have, yeah, we have some homes in that area. And then a little further to the south, we have homes that are fairly close to the right-of-way along Mosley Road. And so... And so that, when you measure the 750 feet inwards to the site, you have this area that kind of juts out eastward into the property and will be a pretty substantially wide buffer. And again, we're talking about exist, or existing vegetation becoming that buffer. If there's a need at some point, because there's, I don't know, dead or dying trees, or maybe there's sparse areas in the buffer that where we need to enhance that, we have in the proffer that, of course, we'd go in and supplement the existing vegetation in order to increase the effectiveness of the buffer. So a lot of attention has been paid to this particular feature with the, with the goal of ensuring a substantial buffer with, between the proposed construction and the existing residential units. Was there a question on that?
No. Mr. Chairman, Mr. Donahoe, I think that 750 feet of distance is really important, particularly to those adjacent property owners. And the way that proffer is worded, it does talk about the minimum of the 200 feet. And it does say variable width, which leaves that open. What does variable width mean? And I know you're proffering the exhibit which shows that distance, but the but for me is I would like to see some explanation of that commitment to that 750-foot distance written in the text of the buffer, whether that's defined or described as a buffer or a setback. I think that 750-foot number for some properties is the minimum. And the way this is written, it kind of leaves that open to question. So I would like to see some language that would clarify that.
Great point. In one of our drafts that we had early on, we spelled that out. Of course, what you do have before you are the proffers that we received from the EDA. They've been working with us, and we've had meetings since we got this version to discuss that exact point. And I think we're heading towards a place of being on the same page with, including that language specifically so that if there's any concern about just what that means and what this could result in, even though we do reference in the proffer, this shall be provided in accordance with the conceptual plan, which does show this. I think it's safer, and I would prefer it, and I completely agree to have that specification in the proffer. Yep.
You're just saying you wanted it both, both on the exhibit and in the proffer spelled out?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Petrowski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So putting the 750 feet in my terms, I'm picturing two NFL football fields longways. You know, that's a pretty significant amount of preserved space. But to try to, I guess, envision the entirety of what we're preserving there, do we have any idea of the length of it rather than just the width? Because I guess I'm just trying to figure out with this project, how much green space would we actually be preserving in this part of the county with just this buffer alone?
That is a, that's a good question. I don't have the linear measurement, but it's substantial. It's a large property, and we're talking going, you know, well, again, it's variable width in that area, but it is, as you go northward on the site, it's, I don't know the exact measurement, but it's a good, good length of space.
Mr. Donahoe?
We could put some dimensions.
We could.
On this that might help that some.
Mr. Chairman, I think to follow up on Commissioner Petrowski's point, it does seem like with the trail network and the width and length of these buffers, are you, would you be in a position to give an estimate of a percentage of open space that's going to be provided in a land plan that's shown on the conceptual exhibit?
So is that something you'd be interested in seeing as a proffer? Or would be something that would be preferable to be captured in the staff analysis? Because.
I think more so in the staff analysis, because I think until the site's really engineered, you're not going to know that. So just in the analysis, just as an estimate, because I think it gives you a bigger picture of the context of what the campus would look like.
I'd be happy to add that.
Great. Commissioner Sloan?
I concur with both Commissioner Frye and Commissioner Petrowski. I would also like to see some more performance-based language as to what the buffering is intended to, intended to achieve. We, when we did the Carvana case, we included additional language where if it was feasible to add earthen berms to block line of sight, I also noticed we included like limits of disturbance, you know, non-disturbance areas, if we could, if we could look at the site and try and determine, you know, where those would be applicable as well. I'm not, personally, I'm not comfortable with plant one tree for every, you know, 200 square feet. We've always, at least to my recollection, we've always used a certain landscaping, landscaping A, landscaping B, landscaping C. But again, I would like, I would like the buffers to look more, you know, we're trying to avoid direct line of sights from residential, you know, from the residential homes and to, you know, if we're not going to be orienting, you know, bay doors towards the street, that means the bay door is going to be facing people's houses to the rear. Perhaps we want to avoid that. You know, more performance standards as to what the buffering needs to achieve. And also, and maybe it's not a big deal, but I know that in prior cases, we've been very careful to make sure that we've used bufferings from the, measured as from the ultimate right-of-way as opposed to something else. That would be helpful for me.
Okay. I'll verify that last point.
Is your, is your thought that possibly the use of a berm could encroach within the natural buffer?
Sure.
That may, that would mean losing trees and, you know, some of that. We were trying to keep outside of the buffer with whatever berm techniques might be necessary for screening. So you have the 200-foot minimum buffer, and you have potentially the 750-foot. But then outside of that would be where some of the techniques like berming might take place, if there needed to be screening from dock doors or from things like that. That would be kind of more interior to this kind of green moat that we're building around this whole site because we don't, you know, know what the uses are going to be, but we only have a limited number of uses. So that's kind of the technique that, from a staff standpoint, we've been trying to use on this whole case.
Sure. And my ultimate goal without having specific language is, one of the things I do think we did successful on the Carvana site was, for the most part, and granted, it's not exclusive, certainly in the dead of winter, you can certainly see through some of the trees and, which is kind of why I'm a little nervous to, let's plant a tree here and there. Also, there, I don't see any language in here where it says those buffers need to be maintained. I see where we will plant to fill a vacancy, but we can take out dead stuff. I don't see anything in here that says it needs to be actively maintained. I think that's important. You know, and I know some, and I know we did include a lot of stuff with Carvana at site plan. You know, Greg had a lot of discretion to work with them as they needed to move dirt on the site and so forth, and where berms could be built, where we had more narrow buffers and we didn't need them, where we had the larger buffers, you know, natural buffers and things like that. I think some language that would convey to folks that we're trying to achieve a goal here. And I do, I do apologize. I did say, you know, bays on the back of the houses where people could see it. I know that we, there's a proffer against that, so that's just right back.
Okay. All right. So moving on to some of the other points that you've shared with me along the way. Wanted to take a look at further limiting uses or creating greater setback of undesirable uses. I think we're trying to actually do both here, you know, greater setback in that we've created greater distance between where folks live and where the ultimate construction will be because of that substantial buffer rose we just discussed. Proffer two is the uses proffer. And so, as I mentioned, we're down to seven primary uses. Folks did express some concern with the plastics manufacturing, so that has been removed as a primary use and actually fell into the accessory use category. So you can see, we've, we've, you know, made some changes to the uses permitted on the property. Again, of the universe of uses that would be permitted in a typical I2 site, this is nowhere near that. We're just down to seven. There are well over 100 uses that are in the, in the, that are enumerated uses in the zoning ordinance for the I2 zoning district. And as I said, we're down to seven primary uses. Next, moving on, we do have a proffer three E.
Commissioner Sloan, if I may, and I apologize for doing this. Hey, Garrett. Just nod your head on this one if you want. Niagara, do they, do they manufacture the bottles for the water on-site?
Yes, and gas.
So we would be excluding that. Is there?
No, it'd be an accessory to the manufacturer.
It'd be accessory to the business.
Okay, so we've covered that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So you kind of beat me to the punch on this one for outdoor stor, actually, it was a different proffer. But for outdoor storage, we want to take a look at, you know, having this be in a place that's not visible, of course. So we want to screen it. We also don't want it any closer than 500 feet to the boundary line of the property. And that's, again, to further safeguard any, you know, visual impact on neighbors. So that, that's a proffer we've included in the case.
I had a question about that. So you feel like the distance of 500 feet, if there were cranes that were being stored, if the crane were extended, would that be visible? Because you can't screen or fence that. So could there be a proffer that said any stored equipment like cranes or bucket trucks would be stored at their lowest height?
That's a good idea. That's something we can look to add to, add to the case.
And I say that because having driven along some interstates and seeing how companies want to advertise, they'll extend all this equipment above their, their buffers and their screening.
Okay. Thanks for that one. All right. So moving on, so we're getting into, getting into the performance standards. In particular, we wanted to address light, noise, odor, building height, and we have some other things as well. Building height, 150 feet is the, as the I2 standard. We did go a little bit further to explain that this is applicable to all elements of the building. Any architectural elements that, you know, might be a potential concern for folks, everything's capped at 150 feet. So we're clear about that. That, of course, you know, water towers, which we discussed before, a height of up to 199 feet, which would exceed that 150 standard, those, that proffer would not apply to that particular piece of infrastructure. Noise. Noise has been discussed. We've applied a proffer here that sets a decibel level of 65, which would be measured at the, at the property line. And this is, you know, we've split it into daytime decibel levels and evening decibel levels to, of course, honor the evening hours. And that, so that addresses the noise issue. We have a proffer that speaks to the kind of conformity of lighting and the hierarchy of lighting as we included in the language throughout the project. Again, you know, this is a campus, it's a park idea. Some of the, the proffers that we have, as well as the master design plan, will really help to flesh some of those things out that really would make this a cohesive technology park. The next one is to continue with the performance standards for odor. Odor was something we needed to draft a proffer for. This proffer was provided by the EDA. Any, any project or any use, I should say, that would require this active air permit, they would be required to follow the Virginia DEQ requirements for odor control and management plan.
Excuse me, Mr. Donahoe?
Yes.
Commissioner Hilton?
Excuse me, just want to note, do you have any proffers for noise light during the construction phase of the project?
No, we don't, specifically not for the construction phase.
This might be something worth revisiting.
To be more permissive during that period of time?
I know we've talked about it with residential developers, saying that, you know, construction can occur between this time and this time, and just making sure that we don't interfere with residents in the area during the construction phase.
Okay.
Saying some parameters around that. If you feel appropriate, if not, then something we can talk about offline.
So we do have those noise, in reference to noise, some hours of that in the case now with the proffers. So are you saying you'd like those to be expanded to allow for a longer period of noise for, during construction? Is that, is that what you're asking for, Dr. Hilton?
Right, specifically during, during the time of construction. So just making sure, you know, as we're building out in that area, that we keep in mind the quiet and ease enjoyment, enjoyment of the residents of the area. Just something I know we, we've kind of put it out there for other developers in the past. So it might be something we can look at.
So, Mr. Donahoe, not really affecting the standards during operations, which is what you have provided for, but could there be some restrictions on hours of construction? So is it going to, would construction be permitted seven days a week, six days a week, ending at four o'clock on Saturday? Are there reasonable hours that could be put in place that would be more considerate of the neighbors?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea. It's something we could, you know, discuss internally, see if we have, you know, something that we've used in the past perhaps. And if not, we can look to develop something that caters to this particular site in particular.
Yeah, and we understand that with the, with the buffer zones and that sort of thing, you know, we might have expanded hours of construction because at different phases of the construction time, you know, we, we might not be impacting the neighbors around us depending on a decimal level or even, or even the light pollution if it's going on, you know, 24 hours a day in order to get our, you know, get the tenant in at a reasonable time limit. So we don't, we, we don't need to say, in my mind, I don't think it needs to say, hey, you know, only construction between eight and four. But we also need to maybe put some parameters in there in terms of noise if it occurs. If construction is going on 24 hours a day or something like that in order to get the tenant in there, that it won't exceed, you know, this amount of decimals, you know, you want the light pollution, that sort of thing from, you know, we don't want to constrain ourselves. If we have a short suspense to get someone in, we don't want to handcuff ourselves, but we also want to be just good neighbors.
In reference to the noise, we've already got 65 decibels during the day and 55 at night. And what we could do is just, I mean, say that that includes construction requirements too. If that's what your concern is.
That's my point.
But we've already set the, the light and the sound, the noise levels at a, at a very kind of low level for this case.
Right. I think that's during, after the construction in operation, but while we're under construction, we want to also be good neighbors during construction.
If we add in that proper construction period included, that would be.
That would be sufficient in my mind. I'll leave that to my fellow commissioners for their, their ideas.
Okay.
Commissioner Sloan?
Mr. Chair, I, I think that's going to be a tall, that's going to be a tall order. Granted, it's a 2,000-acre site. You know, perhaps there's a way we can try and measure something at property lines, but, and I'm just, I spent a lot of time in Raleigh. I spent a lot of time on RTP. And, you know, if the.
spent a lot of time in RTP, and, you know, if the board of supervisors was to approve a case like this, and you get an intel or somebody like that that actually, you know, we get an intel, they, they will go 24/7, you know, building it. You know, and I think any, any piece of industrial equipment, a bulldozer, dump truck, anything, it's going to exceed, you know, under, when it's, under normal operating conditions, I think it's not, but I think there's some ways to try, we can maybe approach to try and buffer, you know, the adjacent, you know, folks that live in the adjacent residential areas, but on certain parts of the site, it's just, it's going to be hard to do.
A slightly different scale for the construction period.
Yeah.
What I'm hearing.
And you know, if it's too low even for normal operation, do we, do we really need to raise it in order to attract the type of industry that we want to attract? Do we need to raise it? Is that too low? Or how do we know it's set at the right decimal?
We've spent a lot of internal time trying to find out what that good balancing point is, and we, from a staff standpoint, we came up with the 65 decibels during the day and 55 at night. So that's what's in the case now. So that's for normal operating period. Now, the construction, you all bring up a good point, we really hadn't looked at the temporary construction period and what the noise level might be for, for that, but we'll give that some thought as we go forward.
And was economic development in the conversation when the decimal?
Yeah, well, we've been going back and forth with EDA with some of the numbers and proffers that we've been recommending, so they seem to be comfortable with the levels that were in their latest draft that you had included.
Yeah, because I mean, if we need to attract a different type of tenant, then we don't want, we don't be, we don't want to be handcuffed to a certain decimal level if it needs to be a little, little bit more. Or what the process would be if we attracted a tenant that needed a little bit more noise or light, how would that, how would that be handled? You know, we want to kind of put it in a, in a, in a way where we know that the minimum is here, but give ourselves a little buffer if we need to increase a little bit in order to attract the right tenant. We don't want to say they can't come because they're going to be too loud. They're, if they bring a lot of jobs and it makes a lot of sense in other areas, we don't want a hangup in this one area. I think, I think it's great that we thought about it, but let's, let's kind of also just make sure that, that we got the right decimal level in order to attract the right people.
I think 55 and 65 are kind of an industry standard for, especially for this I-2 light industrial that's supposed to be self-contained inside of the buildings. You shouldn't really be hearing a lot from an I-2 light industrial. And if you're hearing more than that, that's more, I think, getting into I-3 uses and something that is a little bit more intense. Is that, am I wrong in assuming that? Something louder than that, you start getting into more intense uses? Yeah.
Well, I mean, it's such a large area, we have the, the buffers that are included here, we tried to consider all that.
Types of uses that are being proposed here, so I thought we had gotten to a pretty good point with the 65 and 55. 55 being at night, really pretty, that's pretty, pretty restrictive. So if, if you wanted to adjust anything to that, but, I mean, some of the comments we've got from you all at the last meeting was try to put in some performance measures that would, you know, protect the surrounding neighbors that their property, that they could still have the quiet enjoyment of their, their property, and we've tried to do that with this set that you have before you now, and that is also what, yeah, the EDAs agreed to. So I think they're comfortable, and Mr. Conlon can come up in a minute and address that position, but I, I think they were comfortable with those levels for the project at the property line. I mean, that's, that's, that's where we're taking the measurement.
Yeah, just as a reminder, these proffers that we're reviewing are proffers that we did get from the EDA, so they reviewed these, providing them back to staff, and, you know, that particular discussion hasn't been a point of contention to date that I'm aware of. But I don't want to speak for them if they do, if they wanted to comment on that point at some point, if you guys want to bring them up.
I don't know how we factor in some of the wiggle room that you're kind of suggesting. That's, that's difficult. So I would think we got to fix some, some decibels levels that you are comfortable with, and we can provide you more information if you want it on, you know, some of that. But I don't know how we could make adjustments for this business or that business coming forward. We just kind of have to draw a line in the sand and kind of keep with it, I guess. I mean, I don't know how else to handle it.
Go ahead, sir.
Okay, so I, I think I'll move on to the, to the rest of the performance standards. So I've already talked about this shop or storage yard, and how close that, or how far away it needs to be from the property line. We included this next proffer here, the safe conduct and of operations proffer, you know, really to just kind of try to allay fears of the, kind of the big, bad industrial use and some of the things that come from those. We don't expect to, we don't anticipate having those types of uses. Obviously, we have a very limited set of uses, but we did want to include this proffer in there because it does, you know, specifically get at some of these concerns that people might have, that these shall not be something that, that come from this particular property, and they speaks to vibration, smoke, dust, heat, that sort of thing.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Mr. Donahoe, to, on the safe conduct of operations, and I, I think that is a good language to set the, the expectation that the manufacturing company, whoever it is, is going to be a good neighbor, and that they're going to be conscientious about being a good neighbor. I'm wondering if the applicant would consider a condition that required a, a citizen liaison officer to be available to the, to the public during its operations on the property or during construction and during its operations, so that the people who live there and experience firsthand any kind of incident or question or concern would have a designated person that they could reach out to, sort of like a citizen hotline, but have that as part of their business model, that they would provide that kind of communication as part of their operations. I just offer that as something to be considered and to see if the applicant would consider that.
Yeah, well, I think it's a good idea and something we could have further discussion with the EDA about.
I concur with Commissioner Frye that I think, you know, I think the statement is good. It designates what the intent is. My question is, is how is it enforceable? How are we defining excessive, you know, I'm just, I wrestle with, again, what is this, what are the specific metrics by which there would be an enforcement action called upon? You know, who, who is, who decides if something's excessive or not? You know, I appreciate the intent, but at the end of the day, if something was going on, who, who monitors this? Who enforces this? Who decides if a vibration, smoke, dust, heat is excessive?
Okay, so if this proffer is to stay, you're envisioning kind of a subsection to this, which would basically spell out the who and when and what and all that?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I think it's, I think it's important to have it there because it does state the intent.
Sure.
And I think that's, that's important. But beyond that, I'm, I'm not sure what teeth it has and what's...
Okay. Fair enough. We can take a look at that one and see if there's more that could be added to it to make it more enforceable and, and come back to you.
Mr. Chair. Yes, sir. Commissioner Petrosky.
So I agree with Commissioner Frye and Commissioner Sloan. I was going to ask the same thing about, you know, how do we enforce the excessive? You know, how's that defined? And I would also maybe, for consideration, splitting this up into separate conditions because I would think if you're talking about, did you switch the slide? Okay, thank you, I'm like, I lost where I was, yeah. So I would think any advanced manufacturing is probably going to want to limit the vibration on their property, and the heat is also specific to the, the property, but I would think smoke and dust, I would say we wouldn't want that to be excessive even if it was still within the boundaries of the property. So I feel like we have two different standards we're looking at. What are the standards of things that will affect the neighboring properties? And that would be, you know, the vibration and the heat, but with smoke and dust, I would say we might want to be a little bit more concerned about what even happens on-site, regardless of what leaves the site. Because, you know, if smoke's going up and not necessarily leaving the borders of the site, I think we still want to have some conditions and some standards around something like that. So I'd maybe separate and be more specific with metrics.
If I may build upon that, I think this is an important place where you're going to need to create a differentiator between pre-development and post-development. Anybody that's lived near a construction site in the middle of July and you're trying to control dust, that's, good luck with that.
Agreed.
Part of that, too, Mr. Petrosky, could be in the restrictive covenants that they develop, you know, within their internal technology village. So hopefully, some of those internal conditions could be handled through restrictive covenants on the project, not necessarily built into the zoning case, but we'll look into that.
We, I mean, we can talk about covenants, but I would say for this, going through this public process, I mean, I think the intent is we're not going to have smoke stacks. I mean, this is advanced manufacturing, that's not a thing, but rather than relying on the covenants, I would rather give the citizens during this public process reassurances about while operating, not necessarily construction, but while operating, that the county is saying you cannot do this and not necessarily depend on the covenants.
Okay.
My only concern, Andy, with that is, I believe your, your, Mr. Robinson would be very quick to remind us all that the county doesn't enforce restrictive covenants on the project.
No, I, I understand that part, but I'm, I'm just saying, if it's, you know, a commercial neighbor, in a commercial neighbor within the actual 1,700 acres of the technology park, and there were issues regarding some of these types of issues, those could be resolved through the use of the restrictive covenants that are handled by EDA and/or whoever the management of the, of the technology park is. So our perspective thus far has been looking more at how to protect the surrounding neighborhood than it was the future tenants, but we, we can look into some of that also.
Mr. Chair. So, so, Mr. Donahoe, in the wording of that proffer, just thinking about the operations, not construction, could you just take out the word excessive? Because if it goes beyond the boundaries of the property, it's going to have an impact on adjacent properties. And you can measure that.
Okay, can we get a note of that? Any more on that one? All right, thanks. Okay, so again, continuing with the performance standards, loading bays. Talked a little bit about that. We do have a proffer in there that speaks to, you know, how we want to have loading bays oriented, of course, not towards any public roads within the development or on the periphery of the development. We'd also, you know, want it to be screened or to be oriented away from any adjoining residential development. Although we do have those substantial buffers in place, we still don't want to have that kind of business end of a use being located closest to the residential development. So that's something that was a concern of ours as well. We've included that into this proffer. Of course, supplemental, supplemental screening, things like that, where, you know, glimpses of it could be seen, I guess, from the right-of-way, that type of thing. We'll make sure, we'll look at, at the time of site plan to make sure those vantage points are all addressed, either by building orientation or prefer, preferably through building orientation, but also supplementing it with landscaping, you know, to create some screening there. And then we have an exterior rooftop equipment proffer, and this is, of course, just to, you know, make the buildings that we have on the property a lot more attractive looking. We don't want to have a lot of the equipment visible from the adjoining residential development or from, you know, public streets within the development. And so those are pretty straightforward. Last slide for this would be just to point out that we do have in the proffers a requirement for a master design plan, basically a set of guidelines that, that really help to spell out, I think, how this is going to become a park-type of design, a campus at the end of the day. There's, this is going to take a look at the, having a coordinated sign package, landscaping throughout the development, which could include things like berms and throughout the development in appropriate locations, pedestrian connectivity. Perhaps it could even include what we, the previous discussion on dust and vibration, things like that, things that we could incorporate into that plan that, that speak to perhaps ongoing maintenance, things like along those lines. With that, that's, that concludes the Upper Bangalaya Green West portion of today's work session. Should we have any questions?
Any questions from other commissioners?
With that, we're going to take a brief 10-minute recess. I know the speakers and everyone has been here for a few minutes, so give everybody a chance to kind of stretch their legs and get a real quick drink. We'll reconvene at 3:27.